Thank you very much. Well, welcome everyone to the September 9th, 2020, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. I think we're all familiar now with Zoom meetings and so we're conducting it by Zoom. Thank you for joining us. Tonight's meeting includes public hearings for two proposals. A front yard setback variance for an entryway addition at 6720 Samuel Road, and a first floor height variance for a new home at 5313 West 60th Street. Public input has been provided to us for these matters through the Better Together Edina website, and by phone at 952-826-0377, and by the online correspondence form on the Planning Commission's website. Just click Submit Comments. We receive for this meeting, and generally for all meetings, we receive feedback this way, and we appreciate everyone that's provided feedback. We're getting some outstanding feedback. There will be an opportunity later, if you want to provide testimony to the matters related to tonight's meeting. I'll give more detailed information at that time about how to provide testimony for tonight's meeting. Of course, if you've already provided your feedback, we have looked at it, and so you don't feel like you need to provide the same feedback twice. If you do, also if you do provide feedback, we hope that you'll provide feedback that's, you know, gives another unique perspective instead of everyone providing the same feedback. That's my intro. There's nothing else, is there anything to add? I'd like to invite a staff member, Liz Olsen, to conduct roll.
Thank you Chair Number. Commissioner Olsen?
Here.
Commissioner Barubi?
Here.
Commissioner Cullen?
Sophie, that's you. Looks like she might be having connection issues.
I agree. She is on, so I'll continue. Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Agnew?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Chair Nemerov?
Thank you very much. And now everyone's received the meeting agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, are there any motions or?
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I second.
Staff member Olsen, will you take the role for that, please?
Commissioner Olsen? Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemerov?
And one thing I should also explain to people who are only participating in tonight's meeting, because we're doing the meeting by Zoom, we have to do a roll vote to make sure we record every vote for every matter. So you're going to be seeing a lot of roll votes tonight that you wouldn't ordinarily see in a public meeting. The next matter that we have for tonight's meeting is approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on August 26, 2020. Does everyone have any comments or feedback to those minutes?
The only thing I would add is in Section 9, I think I was given a lot more credit than I deserve. It says I reviewed Nolan Mainz. Lou Miranda also reviewed the Lowden, and I think it was actually the Laurent that you reviewed, right? I don't know if reviewed is actually the right word. I think it was just a comment. So I don't know how picky we want to be, but I wasn't really reviewing it. I was just making a comment. And I do think we need to correct Commissioner Miranda's comments were regarding the Laurent, not the Lowden.
Yes. Thank you Commissioner Barubi. And I assume to be nitpicky, is that the right word? Nolan Mainz, I think Nolan Mainz was plural, instead of Nolan Maina, so it has an S on the end. So we can change the word reviewed and change the Lowden to the Laurent. Any other comments or changes? The motions, resolutions?
I move to approve the minutes with the changes that we just said.
I second.
Second. Okay, I think I heard Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Strauss. Ms. Olsen, would you take a roll vote for approval, please?
You, Commissioner Olsen?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemerov?
Hi, thank you everyone. And that takes us to an exciting moment in tonight's meeting. We have a special item for special recognitions and presentations. It's not something we have on every meeting, but tonight we are grateful that we have a new student member, Sophie Cullen. Welcome Sophie. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, so my name is Sophie Cullen, and I've lived in Edina my whole life. I went to Normandale Elementary and continued my French immersion into Valley View Middle School. And I switched to St. Paul Academy in ninth grade up in St. Paul, East St. Paul, and I am a rising junior there. So class of 2022. And I joined this, or I tried out for this commission because I'm really interested in city zoning and ordinances, and I'm really curious to see how the government process goes. And I'm really grateful to be here and that you guys chose me as a student commissioner. So thank you for that. And yeah.
Well, thank you. You know, ordinarily, if you were having a live person meeting, we'd all, everyone would have an opportunity to get to talk to you, but on behalf of the Planning Commission, we're happy to have you and we look forward to a great year.
Yeah, me as well.
That takes to our public hearings for tonight. And the first one is a 1.67 foot first floor height variance for 5313 60th Street West. Assistant City Planner Chris Ocker will present for the city. Ms. Ocker, are you ready?
I am. Are you able to see the PowerPoint?
Unfortunately not.
Okay.
Chris, let me know if you want me to pull it up.
Yeah, why don't you pull it up? Thank you. So Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is located south of West 60th Street. It is, the request is for a 1.67 foot first floor height variance for a new home at 5313 West 60th Street. The property consists of a Rambler with an attached garage. Are you able to change the slides at all, Liz?
Just one moment.
Okay.
Just say next.
Next.
There we are, thank you.
Okay, so it's south of West 60th Street. It's an L-shaped Rambler. It was built in 1956. On the next slide, you'll see that the existing house is lower in elevation. It's, and the homes on either side. And the next slide will show some photographs, with the next three slides will show some photographs in context. The house is to the right and the house to the east, as you can see, is higher in elevation than the Rambler, existing Rambler, and then the one to the west is also higher. So the existing home is sitting down in sort of a bowl, and what they're hoping to do is to elevate that new first floor up to be even with the homes on either side. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the proposed survey showing that the home lines up with all the other homes. It meets all of the ordinance requirements, overall height requirement. The request that they're looking for is to elevate that first floor so it'll be even with all of the other, with the other two homes on either side. So go to the next slide. That's the basement floor plan. Next slide would be the first floor floor plan. Next slide is the second floor. And then the next slide after that was the front elevation of the home. So this would bring that front door up to the front door elevation of the other two homes. It will also provide grading for some positive drainage. Right now, it's sitting down at a lower elevation with homes on either side. So they'd like to elevate it up so there's positive drainage to the street as well as to the backyard. Again, it does meet the overall height requirement, which is actually measured from the existing grade, not from the proposed grade. So the next slide will take you to the side elevations and the rear elevation of the home. They had to put in lookout windows, and the elevation of those actually are based on a flood elevation. There is some flood plain in the area, so the low opening couldn't be any lower than what they're showing for those lower level windows. The next slide shows a color rendering of the home in context. And then the slide after that is an example of the home, showing the homes on either side at the same floor level as the existing homes on either side. Overall height is within the height requirements. The lot coverage is well under the 25%. It's a little under 19%. The side yard setbacks are 10 and 12 feet. The minimum is 10 feet. So it does meet all of the other ordinance requirements with the exception of that first floor height. Now, when the ordinance was changed to add that provision, the whole premise behind it was that we were having situations where homes were being torn down and rebuilt, and the first floors were being elevated to the extent that they were, you know, at mid-window level of the homes on either side. So it was to try and prevent overelevating that new first floor. I don't think when that ordinance was contemplated, that it was really thought about that if you have a house that's lower than the homes on either side, how to bring it up to be at least at the same level as the homes on either side, which is what they're proposing. So staff believes the proposal meets the criteria for the variance to allow the first floor elevation 2.67 feet higher than the existing home with a variance of 1.675 feet. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District will comply with all the zoning standards. The proposed home will be, again, within that height requirement. Maximum overall height requirement is actually a little bit lower than that, than the overall height maximum. The variance allows for the new first floor to be elevated to be approximately equal with the two adjacent homes while maintaining the required distances from neighbors, and then also again complying with the overall height requirement. The proposed home design reflects the character of the neighborhood in height and scale. It brings it up to be at the same level, so you'll have the same sort of streetscape experience. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot and similar to surrounding properties. And it will be an improvement to the existing site conditions. It will provide some positive drainage for the property. Any approval should be conditioned on that the, conditioned on survey date stamped August 17, 2020, and that the building plans and elevations that were submitted date stamped August 17, 2020, and also that it meets the compliance and conditions listed in the Environmental Engineers Memo. The memo did it. That the only requirement would be that a final inspection, that there's an as-built survey, which is standard requirement for any building permit closeout. The property owners are here, present, the Dromaskins, and then Troy with Stone Cottage Construction is also here. But I will stand to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Ocker. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any questions? I just had one brief one, and that is you mentioned that compliance would be, include the final survey, the as-built clearance survey, and I suppose you also meant all the other items in the engineering memo, right?
Correct.
Like stormwater and that sort of thing.
Right, it's all been reviewed, and just at the end of building permit, there's always the requirement for the as-built survey, and an inspection is done to make sure that it's in compliance with that.
Very good. Anyone else have any questions? Well, we can ask later if you want. We have the applicant on. Would the applicant like to say anything about the project?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think what Troy and we have tried to accomplish here is being consistent with the intent behind all the kind of policies in place, and because this house was so depressed, kind of below where the surrounding homes were, we just want to bring it back up to make sure we don't have any grading or water issues. But otherwise, really tried to design everything within the intent of all the rules in place. So thank you very much for reviewing the application.
Mr. Dromaskin? Do any members of the Commission have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, earlier I talked about a public hearing, and I have two extra instructions. So now we've come to the public hearing portion of the meeting. And so anyone who's watching online that wishes to provide testimony can do so by calling us at 1-800-374-0221, conference ID number 9062468, and press star 1. You'll be placed in queue, and you'll be muted until it is your turn to speak. Everyone that calls can speak for up to three minutes. The staff will time the speakers, and we will let you know when you're approaching the end or when you've hit the end of your three minutes. Are there any speakers?
Chair Nemerov, members of the Planning Commission, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerat. I do have a handful of people on tonight's call listening in, but at this point, no one has indicated a desire to speak. For those of you who are listening from home, please remember to press star 1 on your telephone keypad to indicate your desire to speak. That will put you in the queue. Please be sure not to press pound 1. Instead, press star 1. Pressing the pound key will actually remove you from the queue. So it is star 1. No one is yet indicating a desire to speak. So Commissioners, I would recommend that you wait just a minute or so as there is a slight delay in the broadcast and others might be trying to join.
Thank you. I think one of the tricks that telethons and fundraisers used to say, as they say, or meetings would say, they wouldn't say wait for the queue, they'd say, if it's busy, just call back to give that, you know, like having a rope line in front of the hot nightclub. But we can't tell people that. Communications Director Bennerat, would you let us know when you think it's okay for us to move forward?
Waiting until 7:21 on my clock.
Okay.
7:21, and no one has indicated a desire to speak in this public hearing. So I would recommend you move on at this point.
All right. Is there a resolution or a motion, excuse me, to close the public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
I second.
Okay. Ms. Olsen, would you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you Chair Nemerov. Commissioner Olsen?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemerov?
Aye. So now it's an opportunity for Planning Commission discussion, or anyone has a motion, they can do that also. Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, it looks pretty straightforward. I just comment, it's the homeowners mentioned that their intention to be respectful for their neighbors and the neighborhood. And I think that shows that everything, there's the side, you know, lot lines are adhered to, the front setback, the overall roof height, I mean, it seems to me like it's going to fit in beautifully with the block. So yes, I think it seems to me pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew, did you have a comment also?
I did. Comment slash question. We did receive the one correspondence in support of this variance. So I'm curious, question for the homeowners. Did you do any type of like neighborhood plan review? And what was your engagement with your neighbors to socialize or seek feedback on what you're proposing?
Yeah, we, last week, we went through the neighborhood and anyone adjacent to the property across the street or kind of one over in every direction, in addition to behind the property. We brought them all letters, and if they were home, we also spoke to them face to face, answered any questions that they might have, just to make sure they were comfortable with our plans, obviously our intent, you know, if we were approved and if we received the subsequent permits, our intent to start within the next month demo and starting to build, and just making sure everyone felt aware of the situation and informed, and make sure that they knew that they had this forum to be heard. And I believe either one or two emails were sent then prior to the meeting in support. But everyone we talked to seemed to be in support and had really great questions.
Thank you, thank you. That's great to hear. And I think that this is a, I don't know, I don't see any, I don't see any concerns that I have, pass it back over to the other Commissioners.
Okay, so because we have a new Commissioner, I just want to say, because, just brief instructions. If you'd like to make a comment, because we're on Zoom, I try to look to see if anyone has raised their hand or put themselves off mute, taken themselves off mute, and I may not get everyone, so, you know, just jump in. If you feel like you wanted something to say and you aren't being recognized, feel free. We're doing the best we can with the technology. Do any other Commissioners have any comments or any motions?
I move to, for approval of the variance, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Olsen, would you do a roll vote for that motion, please?
Olsen?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemerov?
Hi. So it was unanimous, and I think we all joined together and wishing the applicant good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing tonight is a 4.9 foot front yard setback variance at 6720 Samuel Road. Assistant City Planner Emily Boddicker will present on behalf of the city. Boddicker, you're still on mute.
Thank you. The subject property, 6720 Samuel Road, is approximately 0.4 acres and is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of McCauley Trail and Samuel Road. The existing home is a split entry home with a tuck-under garage. The proposed addition is a four-foot by 11-foot single-story addition that includes entry and closet space. The existing front yard setback on the property is 33.9 feet from Samuel Road. The required front yard setback is determined by the existing setback of the home on the property located to the east of the subject property, which is setback 34.8 feet from Samuel Road. So the existing setback is currently non-conforming. The proposed front yard setback after the entry addition would be 29.9 feet. With the exception of the front yard setback, the proposed entry rate would meet all other zoning requirements. As you know, Minnesota statute and the Edina zoning ordinance requires that certain conditions must be satisfied to approve a variance, the first being that the variance should relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use. In this situation, staff believes that the practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home. The second is that there are circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to every similarly zoned property and aren't self-created. This house currently has a non-conforming front yard setback. The requested variance is minimal and would help with accessibility of the existing home. The applicant is trying to improve the existing structure. The third being that the variance should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and staff believes that granting this variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So the recommended action tonight is to approve a 4.9 foot front yard setback variance to the required front yard setback at 6720 Samuel Road, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. With that, the applicant is, or the property owner is on the call tonight, and I can also answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Boddicker. Do any members of the Planning Commission have questions for staff before we bring the applicant up or allow the applicant to speak? Any questions for staff?
I do. This is Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Agnew?
So Emily, you mentioned that it's currently non-conforming, but I want to understand that a little bit more. So I'll use an example. If the house directly to the east were to be torn down and redeveloped, wouldn't the setback variance be determined by looking at both the house on the east and the west of that property to figure out where that should be?
Yes, either that or the average of the properties on the north side of the block.
Okay, okay. So it's technically non-conforming, but only because they're trying to go through a development? But if the house next to them were going to be doing something, this would be used as like the standard? Does that make sense?
Yep, it would be used to find the average of the home on either side.
Okay. And was the analysis done of all the homes on that northern side to figure out what that average setback is as a comparison?
It was not. We leave that up to the surveyor and the applicant to provide that, if that helps. In some circumstances, it doesn't help. So we leave that up to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Any further questions for the staff? Commissioner Olsen, did you, was that you? Just stretching. Anyone else? Well, you can always ask questions later. Would the applicant like to say anything? You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Oh, I just, I appreciate this process as a graduate of Margaret Butler's Mercy School, Cahill Elementary School, Valley View Middle School, and Edina High School. I've seen a lot of change here in our town, and I really do appreciate the structure of the process and respect the process immensely. My wife and I are both the youngest in our large families, and we are the holiday house. So we're trying to. families, and we are the holiday house. So we're trying to extend the opportunity as long as possible for all of our family to be here with us. So that's our motivation, and we appreciate the consideration.
Do any members of the commission have questions for the applicant? Krishna Berube?
I have a question. So just kind of a clarification, in the correspondence or in the materials, there was a comment about for elderly or handicapped having to drive up into the backyard to get people in the back door. And so then when I saw the diagrams, I was kind of surprised to see that there's stairs. So if someone's handicapped, this doesn't make any difference, right? Are you still going to drive in the backyard?
The difference is, in the current situation, we cannot walk side by side with anyone to get them up the stairs. So that is a safety issue.
Okay.
Even when we've tried to do someone in front and someone in back, it doesn't work that well. So, and there are different relatives and varying degrees of handicapped state. So in the worst of the situations, we've had to drive to the backyard.
Yeah.
Which is ungreat, and walk up two steps instead of eight steps, I think. But inside the house, we've made the steps wider, so that a person could, you know, hold on to someone's hips and shoulders as they hold on to the rail and help them inside the house.
Great. Thank you. That makes sense to me. I was just curious about the, how you were going to accommodate that based on this. So I appreciate that clarification. That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions? I'm Zoom scrolling. Is that a new phrase for the year?
I think it would have to be WebEx scrolling. We're on WebEx today.
That doesn't, that doesn't have the ring, though. Web scrolling? Web crawling? WebEx crawling? I don't, I don't think there are any. So, it doesn't appear. You can always ask questions later. So then, again, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Oh, I'm about to get an update. I'm about to get, speaking of WebEx, I just got a note that I'm about to get an app update. I love the IT department, and, yeah, I'm just warning you. But people in public, that wish to participate in public, try, public testimony to this public hearing, you can do so now by calling 1-800-374-0221, conference ID 9062468, and press star, I repeat, star 1, and you will be placed into queue, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. We will let you know when your time is up. And Communications Director Bennerad, do we have anyone?
We still have a handful of people on the call, but no one has yet indicated a desire to speak. Callers, please remember, if you'd like to provide testimony, press star 1 on your telephone keypad, then we'll know to introduce you, so you can make your remarks. See, no one, Chair Namarov, members of the commission, I would recommend you wait a minute or so, as there might be people watching the broadcast. There is a slight delay, and we want to make sure they have time to call in and get connected. I'm watching my clock, and so it's 7:35. I will let you know if you should move on. Chair Namarov, I do not have anyone in the queue. I think it's safe to move on.
Thank you very much.
I'm for the public hearing.
That was Commissioner Thorson.
I second that.
And that was a few other people. Staff member Olson, could you take a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Namarov?
Aye. And so now it's the opportunity for Planning Commission to have a further discussion. Any further questions or if someone wishes to make a motion, you can do so also. Does anyone have any further comments about the proposal?
To approve the variance, subject to the findings and conditions of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Namarov?
Aye. So that makes it a unanimous approval. We wish to give good luck to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
You too.
So our next matter is reports or recommendations. I just want to pause for one moment and just say, because we're having Zoom meetings for people that aren't watching, that are watching only occasionally, we don't have, we aren't having community comment during our Zoom meetings. So if you, if you'd like to make a comment about a matter that we aren't discussing in tonight's meeting, please use the online correspondence form on the Planning Commission's website, and click Submit Comments on the right side. So that takes us to the next part of our agenda, which is reports or recommendations. We start with a sketch plan review. Mr. Kerry Teague, City Development Director, is going to present regarding 7,001 and 7,025 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, so this sketch plan review is located in the Southdale area. It's the intersection of 70th and France. It's the southeast corner. So here is France, north-south, and 70th, going east-west. And here is the site. Currently, there's a 66,000-square-foot office building on the site. Some refer to it as the U.S. Bank site, just to look at the existing building there. So what the applicant is proposing here is to build a new one-story, 24-foot-tall U.S. Bank building with a drive-through. That would be on the southwest corner of the site. A 10-story office retail, with retail on the first floor, right at the corner. It would be a 23-story, just over 250-unit residential tower, seven-story apartment building. And here is a look at the project. The applicant will go through in more detail, but I'll just quickly show the commission some of the renderings. So you see the 24, or 23-story tower. They have used the Design Experience Guidelines and stepped the building in as prescribed in the plans, as you can see, above 60 feet. This would be the office component of the project. Here would be 70th Street and France. The aerial look, the office residential tower. This is the 100-unit apartment building. And this would be the new U.S. Bank with the drive-through. One thing of note, and I didn't catch this initially, but the U.S. Bank building is proposing a 40-foot setback, as you know, both in the design guidelines, and we've recently updated the zoning ordinance that requires that 50-foot setback. There would be room on the site to shift that back, but the U.S. Bank would like that 40-foot setback, so that might be something that the commission should comment on. I did also indicated that this entire building would be workforce housing. What the applicant is intending here is to meet the affordable housing, the city's affordable housing policy. So every unit wouldn't necessarily be affordable, but they would meet the policy, which is 10% of the total units on the site would be required for affordability at a 50% median income, or 20% at 60% medium income. But they do intend to provide the units on the site. So here's another view, U.S. Bank building, the office residential tower. Most of the parking would be enclosed underneath the buildings. Again, the applicant will go through in more detail. The architect is the same, ESG, who designed the Guitar Center site. So you can see that here in the rendering. You can see there would be utilizing some green roof and amenity areas for residents in the residential. There also would be some green roof elements on the office tower. Another look at the hard corner, France and 70th. So they would be requesting a number of items for flexibility through a PUD. I mentioned the 40-foot setback. The setbacks to the east and the south would also require variances or flexibility through the PUD. Probably the most significant here is the 23 stories. The zoning ordinance maximum here is eight stories. The density range here is well within what's allowed within the comprehensive plan. The proposal here is 63 units an acre. The site would allow up to 150 units per acre. The FAR is a little over 2, and they are suggesting a reduction in parking. This request would require a rezoning from the current zoning of PCD3, where all of these uses that we're discussing here would be allowed under current zoning. They would need some flexibility through the PUD for setbacks I mentioned, again, height and the floor area ratio. Also, the PUD zoning ensures the affordable housing piece on the site. So some, just for discussion purposes, Planning Commission would be asked to talk about the height and how it feels about that. There is a traffic and parking study underway, should a formal application be made. That would be part of it. The sustainability, so, depends on that 40-foot setback that I mentioned, and adequacy of the green space and pedestrian connections through the site. This, I didn't mention that, well, as you recall, we had another developer that went through a sketch plan on the site. Plans are generally similar. The height that's proposed here on the residential tower is taller. The previous request was 14 stories. This, again, 23. So with that, I will stop there and answer any questions that you may have. And the applicant, Ted Carlson, is also on the call along with Neil Riordan, who is the architect. So with that, I will stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Do any members of the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Teague of the Edina City staff? Okay. Commissioner Strauss?
Kerry, if, perhaps maybe later in the discussion, I would, I would, I think I'd appreciate the, your summary of Mick Johnson's reactions to the different proposals. Though you said they were very similar, I remember the field, FAO, was very lukewarm on the original presentation. And I'm just wondering if there was something that jumped out at you that they saw in this version that seemed to be more pleasing to, at least to that review? And then another one is, I was struck, what I really liked was the, was the underground parking. And I was just wondering why they can put the parking underground and hide it, whereas a project we just recently reviewed found it to be the cost, the deal breaker? And are they different, that much different? Or I was, I was thinking that the land situation would be similar, but I don't know if you, that might be a question for someone else, too. But that's, that's it for now.
Yeah, so I can answer, however you'd like it, I could go through Mick's piece of it now, or we could save that for later. But it is a noticeable comparison to the sketch plan that we just had. Part of the difference here is they do have some parking built into the building in a couple of structures, where that previous proposal did not do that. So there is some underground, as well as parking that's above ground, but it's incorporated into the structure, where the applicant on that other project wasn't willing to do that. But it's a, it is a noticeable difference in these, in those two projects. Would you like me to go through the, kind of summarize Mick's comments? I believe I even have, let's see, if I can share my screen here. Can everybody see that? Okay, this might be a kind of a, just a general, this general comment. The area here labeled "one," he had talked about expanding the underground parking to provide more parking underground. Let's see. He had suggested expanding some of the retail along the street here, and maybe that was... Oh, yeah, this, this shows the expanded parking. He's suggesting adding more parking under the streets in these locations. And he was wondering about the connectability here to the Galleria. Really, the way this sets up, it does provide where this, you know, we talk about in the plan of dividing the site into blocks, where the applicant has done a nice job, and similar to that previous plan, where it could be extended to the south, essentially through the drive-through here, and then the east-west connection, should this property develop in the future. He had some concerns about the proximity of the sidewalk along France, and some of the screening there. He had suggested providing a water element within this area, too, and I believe the applicant is open to some of those things. He suggested the 200-foot breaking up of the mass of the building, that building articulation that we talked about. In regard to, oh, he talked about screening of the drive-through, potentially in this area here. Also mentioned that the two residential buildings should line up more. He had some concerns about if this building is brought out more here, it might interfere with that potential connection to the south. He also suggested the potential for, maybe this doesn't show it, but liner condos along the street, and more retail along the streets here within that interior street. He also talked about concerns about the height of the building and the shadow that it casts onto the street. So I might, might show better. So I might, might show better. So with the residential tower here, you can see how it would cast shadow on 70th Street. He had suggested the potential of rotating the building so it doesn't cast such a large shadow. My thinking on that too is I, you know, we've had a lot, as you've seen, we've had a lot of feedback from the residential area to the, to the west. If the building were rotated, it would be more visible to that neighborhood. So just something to consider when you talk about the, the taller building. If we do shift it, it does, it does cast less shadow onto 70th, but it is more visible to the single-family neighborhood to the west. So that's, those are some of the main highlights that Mick had outlined in his memo.
Well, thank you very much. Any further questions for staff member Teague? Development director, excuse me Kerry. Well, the applicant is here. We have Mr. Carlson, who we know, and Mr. Reardon, the architect. Did one of you want to give a presentation or both of you?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Remember I'm on mute or off mute and everyone can hear me, I suspect? Great, well, thank you and nice to see you all again this evening. Got familiar very obviously with most of you and look forward to providing insight and perspective on our latest plan for this prime, you know, Class A site at 70th and France. First, I'd like to introduce our project team and offer a little background. I'll talk about some of the partnerships we've created within our team and talk through a little bit about our plan. I'll keep this to no more than a few minutes and then turn it over to Neil Reardon from ESG. So first and foremost, we'd like to thank the US Bank team, primarily Rich and Leah, who have entrusted us to do our, our latest plan to life and fly our vision with you and citizens for Dyna. They've been very engaged and very proactive and have been very helpful in this process. With ESG, we've got Aaron, Gretchen, Trace, Nate and Neil. So we've got a large team paying attention tonight and looking forward to Neil's presentation in a few minutes. And really what, what really excited about is, is my partnership with our company, Orion Investments and the team from Mortenson, led by Nate Podrass and Brent Webb. Fantastic people, fantastic, kind of the whole standard of construction in Minneapolis and does some really landmark projects and really leaned into this, went into their community and that and they created a great track down the site. And lastly, for the students at the University of St. Thomas, in the University of St. Thomas Mill Estate Program, I suggest you pay attention because we have a few test questions coming after this presentation tonight. So with that, we are obviously paying quite a bit of attention to the previous applicant's submission and we think we've made some discerning changes that are reflected on really the true spirit of the Southdale Small Area Plan. And that revolves around some of the things that Mick highlighted with paying attention to the super block, parking that's generally screened or located within sites and not surface parking. Buildings are fully developed all the way to the street, thinking about pedestrian connections, thinking about create transparencies, but we're really paying attention to all the things that we're very familiar with, how Dyna likes to create, create projects. We have hosted a neighborhood meeting. We did that last Thursday night. Neil and the ESG team did a great job along with Brent Webb from Mortenson and just gathering input from the citizens. As you know, we from past projects have been transparent, engagement. And while I certainly don't expect to get 100% alignment on our projects, we do want the community to know and be aware of what we're thinking and why we've got kind of the plans that we do on this project. So I think we had 38 different participants who had been with me. We got different ideas that we, you know, will share in this plan, will get better and it will evolve with your input and further input from staff and with citizens. We've talked about different things on this site. Kerry's been very gracious and understands what, we've got a very fluid market that is fluid with both people looking to rent apartment buildings, corporate tenants looking to lease off the space, the retail market is very challenging right now and so is the lender investment market. So this is our first shot at really not too much into design, but really into blocking and massing and conceptualize that we want to present with you tonight. Our team really believes in Edina. You know, we believe in the quality of the site and we're looking forward to balancing the Southdale area plan with some market reality. And we hope to see some significant upgrades and differences with previous ideas we've seen on the site. So with that, we look forward to further engagement with you and dialogue with them here. And I'll turn it over to Neil Reardon and then Neil and I will remain available for further questions and comments.
This is, this is Neil Reardon with ESG Architecture and Design. Thank you, everyone. We've got an exciting project here for you tonight and Kerry's already done kind of the overview, so I'm going to keep it relatively brief and just add some more detail in addition to what Ted already offered. Like he said, we did a community meeting last Thursday night. In addition, we actually have a project website, which was up and running at the time the flyers for the community meeting went out. That is being hosted by Mortenson and we're receiving comments starting last week and then going forward here through this first initial part at that website. So that has most of the images from the sketch plan here that you've seen tonight and then were in the packet. I'll just go, go full screen here and, and note that, sorry, I'm not on, on video here tonight. I opted for a better audio here on a different computer, so hopefully you're hearing me well. I won't again reiterate what we've already talked about. You, you know, the project site here at 70th and France. Here's some aerial views highlighting that. These were, these were in the packet. Kerry covered, covered this as well, the project site, room and board to the west, the Galleria to the north and the retail strip mall there as you see in the lower right with the Pancake House, existing photos, which we've already seen. So the project over to overview, really, we think this is a, a great opportunity to really just build upon all the, all the growth here and catalyze more growth in the Southdale and France, France Avenue corridor. Ted already mentioned the project team and I'll just reiterate, you know, the, the Southdale plan and the district design experience guidelines are, we think, really good. They're, they're excellent at guiding just the, the true quality urban design that, that I think we all want to see in our cities and specifically, you know, this, this, this great, this great vision that, you know, for Southdale in general. So ESG's done a lot of work here over the years. We understand these, these well and, you know, I think our, our track record of delivering many projects in the Southdale District speaks for itself. So with that, you know, we're, we're, we understand the, the desire to create the street grid system. We've created four development pads, as you've already seen, that work in, to start to create that. And, you know, one of the things here with US Bank is, is if it's not already implied and what we've currently shown is, is just a continual operation of that branch with minimal disruption. So there's a sequencing here for that, for the bank on the southwest portion of the site before the existing bank is truly, you know, goes away and, and, and is no longer operable. So that is, that part is phase one. This is a new transformative flagship prototype that US Bank is working on. We have those folks, a separate design group at RSP, working with the, on the US Bank side for that part of the project and they were, were coordinating with them and integrating our, our work here at this initial stages. So really the, the goal here is locating that to the southwest corner. That smaller parcel allows all the other things to happen on the rest of the site. So, you know, the smaller blocks, the new internal streets, just getting a higher density and then, you know, on top of that, offering the retail and other services around. But, you know, really most importantly probably is, is just getting, getting the new pedestrian quality spaces in this development, right? So, you know, going from a surface parking lot that's exclusively auto-oriented down to, down to an urban environment is, is the opportunity by this relocation. Some bits and pieces from that small area plan, you guys, you know these, but we just, we just want to let you know that we've, we've been studying these, we've, we've known about these for a number of years and, and really are working on, on that. So these, these vision items here, we think are just really important to, to continue to, for us to look at. We show them in our presentations. We showed these at the community meeting last week. They're just really important to, to continually understand and make sure we're, we're fulfilling these, not just to the basic requirements, but, but doing them really well. So the project summary, you know, it's really the kind of the next step in the evolution here. We anticipate kind of a, an active retail scene, but we also anticipate an, an active residential scene. You know, we're, we're proposing 250 units in the large building and 100 units in the small building and that's a lot of new, new eyes and, and new pedestrians in the space. You know, it's right here at this prominent intersection of 70th and France. We believe that, you know, some, some signature ground floor retail would be really great and really cool there and, you know, could, could really have this great visibility for our project and, and for the other components of our project. So we have some structured parking, as was already mentioned. We've done our, our, our best to, to enclose our, our parking almost exclusively or put it below grade as we know that's the, really the best way to, to get a good boulevard, to get good spaces where we don't necessarily have park space here, but we want to do those public spaces that, that face our buildings and, and provide the interface with the, with the public right of ways. We want to do those really, really well. And then, you know, lastly, we just want to provide some, some flexibility on the site here for, for variety of things to happen. You know, we have a green median on that north-south street, as you've probably seen. We have the opportunity to do some things along the France Boulevard and, and we'd be open to your feedback on, in that area. So Site A, as we're calling it, is the Northeast Quadrant. Again, it's 23-story tower, 250 units, 360 enclosed residential parking stalls and then some associated parking with 10,000 square feet of retail. We think this has a strong street presence with the retail and the residential lobbies at the ends. It does have some, some other components that are street-facing that are ingress and egress for vehicles, you know, really getting in and out of that enclosed parking. And we try to minimize those curb cuts into as few as possible and really try to keep that street frontage as active as we can. There's a larger outdoor amenity roof deck here and really that creates some, some extra, extra great space for the residents, south-facing and, and of course, the great views from the tower itself, looking in both, well, all four directions for that matter. Site B is, is the Northwest Quadrant. This is the, the retail and primarily office and retail. There is, you'll see on, when I go to the floor plan, several different pieces of retail, one large signature retail, but it's 24,000 square feet of commercial retail at street level in all. A screened parking zone, which is kind of that middle zone you saw in the rendering that Kerry had up earlier. And then kind of two shifting plates, volumes, I should say, of, of office that make up, you know, five floors of office at 30,000 square feet each for a total of 150,000 square feet. We think that this, you know, sort of massing and approach creates this kind of distinct design right here at 70th and France and, and, you know, can create an entry point to the whole project, which we think can be, can be really cool. You know, and the building entry points here are really along these back streets as you come and go to, whether that be the retail or the, or the office, or if you're coming by foot or by car. I'll just note that, you know, we haven't, we intentionally have not shown, and this is general across the whole project, we intentionally have not shown a lot of architecture on the facades at this juncture. We know we're, we will do that, of course, in the future, but we wanted to leave that off a little bit at this point to, to really get feedback on, on the proposal itself and in general, kind of amassing and the arrangement of the site more so. So just a quick note on that as we move to, to Site C. So what we have here is a 100-unit building, a seven-story project, just a very simple, elegant bar building in its design with an amenity deck here. You can just barely see behind it there to the south. So these would be smaller sized units and thus, you know, coming in at a, at a different price point and, and already been alluded to the workforce component of this project. So we want to enhance that strong character at the street level by, by doing some walk-up units and a residential lobby really interacting and interfacing with that public street in a, in a meaningful way, in an urban way. And, you know, lastly, just to note that second floor amenity deck there on the, on the backside. So Site D, the southwest portion, we've already alluded to this US Bank branch. You know, it's, it's, it has a 40-foot setback here, I'll note, at this, just at this corner. And that space there is the community room as they have it planned in the building right now. So that's the only portion of that that does go into that 50-foot setback and it does so by about 10 feet there. So the, some of the key aspects of this design, prominent and carefully placed exterior signage, which is necessary for a bank branch of this, of this type. A clear and inviting entrance, you know, this is going to be a modern design, you know, a really transparent community room. And some of the other spaces would be, you know, the, the public banking on the interior, the back of house service functions would, would be relocated towards the rear of the building. The drive-up banking then is also away from France, hidden from the street and happens behind, behind the, in this function here where you can see that overhead lid. So overall, just kind of looking at the site plan itself with the buildings here in more of an opaque overlay, you know, it's a combination of green and hardscape elements, but we really think that there's the opportunity for some rain gardens, some water features, as was already mentioned, but really making this a human scaled, a human scaled space. You know, it's not, it's not a public park, but this, this could be a really, a really nice, a really nice space that, that really is, is scaled to people on their, on foot, whether they arrive by foot, walking from somewhere else, or if they're really just people that are driving to the site and experiencing it that way. You know, we have this generous setback at France Avenue. I think we were complying generally with, with that, but we would, you know, again, welcome some feedback about that, that frontage there and what, what is, what is the best way to do that? We know we, we, there's a setback, but I think there's a variety of ways to achieve a, a nice design there. Again, the, the goal of the internal streets is really just to have activity, to have entry doors, to have active retail on those street-facing interior blocks. A few more renderings, I think Kerry really kind of perused through most of these. This would be the view from the northeast. You can see the Bauer, also known as the Guitar Center site there. A view from the southeast. An overhead view, really more of a, a site plan view of the tops of the roofs of the Already saw this one as well from the northwest and then just a few other shots. I'll flip through here fairly quickly. View from the east and from the north. A site diagram, I don't think we hit on this one before, but this is kind of illustrating the, really the, the pedestrian network that we proposed. And this is obviously an improvement on the existing conditions by a long shot. There still would be some challenges in getting to the, to the promenade to the east and, you know, really connecting, but wanted, what we're doing on our site should provide those future opportunities for that connection as well as, you know, just obviously here we're illustrating our network of pedestrian connections, including, you know, mid-block connections here, for instance, as we know, this is, this is a little longer block than, say, the one on the, the block we're creating on the south. Here's our overall site plan. You know, the, I'll just point out a few key aspects here on, on this, this site, the signature retail portion here, the office lobby entry point at level one here, as well as flanking some retail activity along here. Some internal functions, of course, hidden away from the, the street sides. At this northeast corner then is the residential lobby. There is a section of residential parking and then retail parking here. And then here's that 10,000 square feet of retail on the south side of, of that Site A. This, the small building, the 100-unit building has a lobby right here, as, as I think I already mentioned, and then some, some live-work units flanking that first floor right there. Noting a few things on the US Bank, here's that, that 40-foot setback in this zone and then that, that full 50-foot setback. They are doing their drive-through banking as, as seen here, circulating through kind of in this direction and then providing some parking along the way in two different zones. So just kind of to hit back on, on the, on the guiding principles, you know, it's, it's about the thoughtful urban design infill, really following those design experience guidelines as much as possible. We know that those are good. We do have, you know, constraints on those with the feasibility of our project, but I'll just note that, you know, we're doing high-quality architecture materials. When we get to that part of the design, we're doing best stormwater practices. When we get to that part of the design, we're doing best stormwater practices, we're doing, you know, we're going to do green building, you already mentioned the sustainability checklist from Kerry. So we're doing those things, and then we, you know, we know that there's going to be a little flexibility needed going forward as this project evolves. We anticipate some of that on Site B. You know, so the US Bank portion is the first phase that's developed, and the other phases would, the other portions of the projects would be subsequently developed in a phasing sequence yet to be determined. So with that, I'll just conclude and we can, I can keep the screen up here for the questions or Kerry can control that as well if that's desired. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Ridden, Mr. Carlson. To members of the commission, do you have any questions or comments for this proposal? I suspect there's more than one. And we can go in order if you have questions and you'd like to ask your questions and save your comments for later, you can do that also. Any members of the PC, and I'm web crawling, I guess that's what we're going to call it.
I have questions.
Commissioner Cullen, I see you had your hand up. Would you like to speak?
Yes, one concern I had was the Phase A, the residential, the 23-story, it's 23-stores, correct, 23-story residential building. I'm concerned mostly about the shadow it casts and kind of its presence. It seems kind of out of place compared to the other buildings, and I'm kind of concerned about that height. So that's, there's a way to kind of, you know, lessen the height, or that's just, that's just one of the concerns that I have. So, if other commissioners have.
Well, if you have other things, why don't you share them all at this time if you'd like? You can, we can always come back to you if you want, but if you have other things you'd like to share, please feel free now unless you want to just pass for now.
No, for now, I just, I have concerns about the height of that Phase A building, but you mentioned in the plan that, what was the first phase that they were planning on building for the, was that, was that the US Bank building, was that Phase D? Okay. All right, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Cullen. Commissioner Olson, I believe you read a few things. Did I hear you right?
Yeah, you did. I just had it on mute again. Maybe could you walk through a little bit more? I mean, I love what you've done with the higher density, and I think the other plan that was here before us, you know, was very kind of the suburban, you know, feel, and so this is definitely a step in the right direction. But my concern is a little bit more of the human scale and the pedestrian and open space, and can you walk through a little bit on how everything is kind of up on another level so it doesn't have real access to the community? And, you know, I'm just thinking it might be just a little bit too much. Is there a way to provide some more public space on the surface level that has access for the whole community? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for the question. You know, we've obviously, I don't feel that we've taken a hard look at the Southdale guidelines and tried to incorporate as much as possible. We're lacking a balance being of market demands and flexibility in conjunction with creating just a truly classy project on the site. So when we're talking about, you know, we've got one level of underground parking, we've got, you know, the parking hidden on the site, we're trying to create that active urban streetscape. I think, you know, in further renditions of this site concept, Commissioner Olson, you'll see that while the parking is included within the project towers, the podium, so to speak, that the first floor is engaged, the first floor is commercial, the first floor is retail, first floor is pedestrian-activated, and we will do a better job of demonstrating that, which I think is addressing some of your question about how is engaged. In regards to the actual, you know, public streetscape or elements, we've got a sizable setback along France Avenue, we intend to, we've got an interior connecting street that may act as, you know, will act as a boulevard with drop-off, pickup, short-term parking, some stormwater management. And we're really trying to blend a mixture of all kinds of different issues here to create that modern urban design that's reflective of the plan. So that's why as our team put our heads together and thought, what's best to capitalize on the high quality of this site? It's really a blend of all four things. First and foremost, it's staging and constructing a modern US Bank branch. It really fits their programming and needs. That needs to be said and needs to be reflected and is very important to US Bank for the success of this project. And once that US Bank branch is successfully constructed and they're relocated, should we experience success with the city and citizens, we look to start kind of the phasing of the multi-family tower work project and North East Tower with offices after that. So I think I'm hitting on your questions, maybe not, but, you know, we're trying to create a lot of different things within this project and create a good experience for people who choose to shop or whatever.
I'll just note that, just really quickly though, that, you know, the point of doing these streets the way we're doing them is to really create a great public realm experience right on, right on the streets here. You know, there isn't devoted specific areas of green space, but doing the streets well, in my view, can be just as good, if not better, because the streets we know need to be there for their, you know, just for access, for, to separate the buildings, to create the small blocks as called for. So it just makes sense to just do those, do those well and make that really the quality public space, just like you see in a lot of such really good cities, that just, you know, the most pleasant experience for the pedestrian is when the street is done really well. So I'll just add that component.
Commissioner Olson, do you have other?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, come back later. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, I, just two things. I'd just like to jump in on Mr. Ridden's comment, which was what I was wanting to bring up is, to me, that north-south interior street seems to me to have the biggest potential to really blow this project, you know, into a whole different thing. It seems to me that could be, that could be the area that could just absolutely make this a must, must-visit place. And I think that's selling, you know, presenting this project, I think any attention you make to that experience, I think, is really going to capture people's imagination. One other thing is, when we were going through the areas, so it'd be the southeast block, and then it's the southeast corner of the southeast block. I would like, that to me, I think is also going to be a key entrance outlet point to the promenade, you know, and I think that's a corner that should be paid attention to. I think that's, that's, yeah, yeah, I think you kind of, I mean, that's where the arrow goes over, and then I believe right above the pink line there is the Guitar Center site, which, you know, is, but I think that's, that's kind of an entrance point, perhaps, certainly not maybe not vehicles, but connecting to that promenade experience. But, yeah, yeah, so what's captured me is the north-south street and the opportunities there and that connection to the promenade. I like, I like to see that can, what opportunities exist there. Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss, Commissioner Barubi.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I really appreciate what you've said about the importance of the street and the green space. And clearly, when you look from a top-down, you know, if you're in an airplane, this is a really cool place. So you clearly understand what we're looking for. I personally am having a really hard time visualizing how this doesn't just look like big chunky blocks to the pedestrian. So I know we wanted more density, but it feels really blocky to me, and it could just be because I can't quite visualize what it would be to be a pedestrian, you know, an actual pedestrian person walking down the street, because we're just seeing it here. So I will grant you that. Like, if you come back later, further along in the project, and you can show via video kind of how it looks to the person walking down the street, it may look fine, but to me, looking at it right now, it looks really blocky and not enough green, except you see it on the roof, but that doesn't help any of the pedestrians. So you're saying the right thing. I personally don't see it. And then, and then I'm not really clear, you know, you've got the one street that's the promenade. Why don't you do the same thing with the cross street and have two? And I think, I think there was a comment in Mick Johnson from the Architectural Field Office that maybe you could do more underground parking and have even that much more green space within it. So I guess, I guess that would be just a few comments. I do applaud the affordable housing. I think that, that's great. And the green roof in general is great, but, you know, no one on the street is going to see that, and if we're in airplanes, we're really going to appreciate it, but. And then overall, the underground parking is, is great. So glad you could do that. But overall, it's still, it feels, it feels really big to me. It feels really dense, and it's just like big white blocks to me. Thanks.
Oh, thanks, thanks for that comment. I can respond to that quickly, maybe just with a quick follow-up on the east-west street. I think what you're, your suggestion there, I just wanted to build on that. Being more like the north-south street, you like the median, you like the spacing and the feel of that or potential feel of that, if we can illustrate it more in future, future renditions. Just wanted to confirm that median and that approach, the setbacks to the, to the buildings are what you're looking for, maybe potentially on the east-west street.
If that's possible, I mean, that's great. Why wouldn't you do that? And I guess, you know, you're adding a little bit more parking, but maybe that's not even necessary, because why wouldn't you make that also a walking area?
Sure, yeah, we feel that it does have a decently strong relationship right now, but we'll certainly look at opportunities to enhance it and, you know, build on some of the things we're doing better elsewhere, so.
Any other commissioners? I'm just looking, there's a few we haven't heard from. Commissioner Miranda, I see your hand. Why don't you speak now?
Great, thank you. My initial comments are, I agree it is much improved from what we saw the last time, so I think this is a much nicer presentation. Overall, I think Mick Johnson's comments are really on point, and I think they should be looked to, looked at with a fine-tooth comb. I mean, he makes a lot of really good points that are in the Southdale guidelines, and I think we, it's imperative that we keep to those. I also love the affordable housing component of it. That's great. I'm glad that it's being met. In terms of height, between France and York, I think 23 stories are fine. I don't think anybody really has major issues with something that's, you know, far enough away from single-family homes that it's not materially affecting anybody. And it's, you know, there's plenty of other towers within that area, and I don't think that's really a big concern. The caveat being that it's between France and York. Density, I'm fine with the density. I'm actually fine with the amassing of the blocks. I like how they're stepped back, again, the way Mick says, and that's in the Southdale plan, or guidelines, rather. The stepping back makes a big difference from what you perceive on the ground floor, so I think that works really well. In terms of rotating the tower, one of Mick's comments, I don't know, I could see it either way. On the one hand, it does create less of a shadow. On the other hand, you know, it's, if the building were the entire block, it would, you know, it would just be a normal-sized building. So the fact that it's stepped back, I think is the idea that gives more light between buildings that are, you know, in an urban space like this. I mean, if the property across the street were, say, at some point in the future, torn down and a large building built there, it would also be stepped back, and so then you have quite a bit of distance between the buildings, so I don't think that's as big a problem. So I'm kind of okay with the tower and the orientation it's in. Parking, I like, you know, I love that the parking is not obvious, it's not standalone, it's mostly underground or partly underground. The part that's not underground seems to be lined with useful, either housing or services or retail or something. That's, that's very important. Terms of that north-south street, again, I agree with Mick that it really needs to continue all the way through, and if that means modifying the shape of the workforce housing at the south end, I think it's important to do. One thing that I really dislike in proposals before the Planning Commission is developments that feel like they are trapping the consumer inside, and so when you don't have true streets, you know, there's this feeling of entrapment. And there could even be a little jog there. I suppose there could be a jog there if there were some sort of dedication that, that parking would become an actual street if there were a connector on the south side, I suppose that would be. But that really needs to go through, there needs to be a commitment that the street would go through if there's a connection on the south. Also about the north-south streets, I think, I guess it's similar to what Mick said, is that the sidewalk, I think the sidewalks should be wider. So I want to compare the design that you have, if you go to your submission, which has on Page Six, I believe it is, which is from the Design Experience Guidelines, and it talks about the vision, proving access and walkability and human-scale. One more page back. There we go. Oh, too far. Uh, no, it was, well, actually, it's called Page Six. I don't know what. There we go, this one. Has, so, I mean, if you compare your street, it doesn't really look like either the two streets on the right there, which I think is more what that street should look like, where you've got really wide sidewalks, you've got trees on the sidewalks, or lining the sidewalks, rather. And so the space given over to cars is actually pretty small because you don't have the median in the middle. You don't have, you know, those green spaces in the middle just seem very suburban to me. They just don't feel like they belong in an urban space like this. And again, the improved access picture and the human-scale picture, neither of those have greenery in the middle, it's all on the sides, and it's, and it's, you know, either car space or dedicated pedestrian space. So I think that's, that works really well. And likewise, if you ever closed off that street for an event or something, you know, the green in the middle would just kind of get in the way of anything, making it feel like an urban space. So, so I think, I think the wider sidewalks would just make that feel much, much more comfortable for pedestrians. One thing, and this is kind of an nitty-gritty detail, but when we create streets like this or things that we want to call "ru nerfs" or whatever, I think it's important to keep car speeds down, and so if there's the possibility of elevating the sidewalks at the end, so the, where the, where the street begins, where it comes off of 70th Street, you can elevate the sidewalk or leave the sidewalk across the street at the same height all the way, so that the car actually has to go up and down over the sidewalk. That gives, you know, that shows the pedestrian has primacy there and that the cars have to slow down to enter and exit the street. East-West Street, like Mick said, I think housing on the north side might make that more of a, you know, like faces-like sort of experience where you've got housing on the south- housing on the south side and housing on the north side. Um, I think housing and retail isn't an impossible mix, but I think, you know, uh, lining that with with townhomes or something, I think would be uh, make that feel like a calmer area for most of the, for most of the day. Um, but the the block to the left there could, you know, could remain uh, retail and such because you've got the bank on the south side. Um, I think that would give each half of that street sort of an identity. Um, as for France Avenue, um, I think the bank should try to go for a fifty-foot setback there. Um, I think the I think the fifty-foot uniform setback is really important on France. Um, I think it's important to have a street wall there. Um, so uh, I would not be very happy with a forty-foot setback for a part of the project. Um, and like Mick said, the sidewalk really needs to be further away. Um, he described it, the two, two sets of trees that would separate a a sidewalk from France Avenue. Um, if you put a sidewalk where it is in the diagram, it's, you know, it's it's going to be uh, just not friendly at all. In fact, if uh, on that page six that had the the vision, you know, walkable streets and whatnot, you know, the the sidewalk should really go up against the building. I mean, what you really want is that to be access to the building. Um, and if you have it really far away, then it it doesn't feel like access for the building. And I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I I might just uh, respond to just very quickly a couple of those. I appreciate the all the comments. Those are, those are really fine, those are great, fantastic. Um, so I I think, yeah, opportunities for envisioning the France Boulevard a little differently is 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 really feedback we're looking for tonight, so that's perfect as we can um, we can take that back and make some site plan adjustments. Um, uh, on the on the other component, um, just the the, I'll note that US Bank did intentionally want uh, this community room to be a little more outward facing, thus of the forty-foot setback versus the fifty-foot setback, but we certainly understand, you know, your desire to want that fifty-foot setback as like more of a continuous street wall there um, and and maintaining that consistency down. Um, but I'll just note that that their intention was to provide this community room space. Um, and the way they were doing that was by uh, asking for uh, a little bit of deviation from that point, so we'll discuss that as I, you know, the feedback with our team on that one. But thank you for all your comments. Those are great.
Uh, other, thank you. Other commissioners, let's see, the few of you haven't spoken, if you'd like to, you don't have to. Uh, Commissioner Bennett.
Everyone can hear me fine?
Yep.
Yes.
I thought I heard no at first. Well, at least you can read lips. All right, so um, you know, I have a lot of the similar comments from fellow commissioners in in general. I think when a proposal or sketch plan like this is really close to hitting the mark, we have a lot more specific comments like what you're seeing tonight as well as through Mick Johnson's comments. I wouldn't take those as to you know, have to just go back to the drawing board and completely redo everything compared to some other proposals. I think this is really close. And on that note, um, just want to kind of focus on the the fact that this site is again, another catalyst opportunity. And in my opinion, we haven't had a true mixed-use proposal and um, subsequent development come by us yet that has truly hit the intent of all the Southdale guidance that has now been issued, and I feel like this is on the right track and has the opportunity to to really nail that. So I just urge you to take our feedback tonight, the council's feedback, residents' feedback. Listen to that and come back to the public hearing with something that it'd be silly for us to not approve. And something that's really truly special that kind of addresses all the comments tonight. Uh, specifically, I wanted to just kind of go through each site. Uh, I don't have much more to add than what's been said, but I'll just focus on a couple of my highlights. So the northeast site, Site A, which is the the tower. I would just say, since the architectural elements haven't been kind of you know, hashed out in detail here, I I just, I just suggest more glass. Uh, and and I'll get back to that later. Um, for the northwest side, Site B, I really like the architectural juxtaposition of its massing right now for uh, I think it offers a a cool look from no matter which side you'd be approaching, Seventieth or France, it just kind of always will look different. So it's a, it's a cool way, even though there's a much taller building behind it. It it also offers kind of a, you know, a signature element to the overall development, so I I I like the look of that and uh, what it embodies or potential. Uh, for the southeast side, Site C, I would just encourage it to stick out a little more from a, and not just be something totally blending in, so I don't know whether that's uh, more, you know, user amenities or uh, maybe a more enhanced connection, you know, to that uh, street to the southeast. And getting people directionally toward the promenade. Uh, that's it there. And then southwest side, Site D. I mean, I think we look at this now and we all are thinking, hey, there's five lanes for a drive-through uh, in ten or maybe not even that many years or longer, who knows? I mean, the future of banking is going to change so much as it has now, so I would really design that site with the intent that it's going to change dramatically to match some of the other buildings and structures on-site currently. And so I'd I'd say to focus on that and um, um, what with some of the other um, uh, elements, uh, let's, I'll move on to just looking at all the sites as a whole. So uh, if we're looking at the entire site here, I I kind of have some caution just against putting a lot of effort along France Avenue. Uh, France will continue to carry a lot of traffic and cars and noise. And I'd say just anything there, just widen the sidewalks and make it a pleasant experience for people to move along. Uh, because if the focus shifts to making these interior cross streets truly pedestrian-focused um, and just really uh, pedestrian-friendly feel, that's that's where people are going to congregate, that's where people are going to want to be. So the last thing I just want to end with is the fact that well, there's a lot of great things that I'm seeing right now with the site, but you know, surely it'll be a catalyst, but the thing it lacks most is a very strong signature element. And so I know we might see that when the details kind of uh, fill in, come pub, come to public hearing. And maybe, maybe that signature element will be something, you know, on the pedestrian scale. Uh, you know, in the public realm, maybe it's some water feature, or it's a gathering space, or it's just the the feeling people have walking around, but I want you to seriously consider um, the the tower, basically the northeast Site A. I mean, can, you know, currently how it's proposed, it'll be two hundred and eighty feet tall, so this will become the tallest building in Edina, so to me, there is something that should really embody a signature element in that tower. Because whether you're on the site or you're near it or you're far away, people are going to see this project, so whether it's a an architectural element or a functional element of that tower, I I'd encourage you to be bold and creative and unique and one thing that comes to mind is since Mortensen's a partner on this project, they have an incredible uh, set of experience and track record in the renewable energy field, so if there is something, you know, like a a turbine or solar panels or something that could be kind of built into the top of that tower or something that could really show that hey, this this development is forward-thinking, it's responsible, and that really will match the vision of Edina and what we want to see with developments, because I look at this project and your proposal and other ones, we see kind of a laundering of the things that will be done, you know, as, you know, more or less standard for sustainable development, but something that starts from, you know, the ground floor with sustainable development and having some feature like that, you know, captured in into the actual structure that people can see will kind of help everyone see that, hey, Edina is about sustainability and thinking forward as well as Mortensen, Orion, and US Bank, and ESG, so that's kind of the last thing I'd like to just finish with and uh, just really want to encourage all the great work done and multi-use here is fabulous and what we want to see more of. And thanks a lot.
Uh, Commissioner Bennett and and Planning Commission member, that was really important to us as we looked at the design and were paying attention to the setbacks along France Avenue. Um, we believe in the connectivity of the site and creating a better production experience. And you hinted that, you know, maybe we paid a little less attention to France and more on the interior. Uh, we're working respectfully with the setback, and that's been very clear in this process. But our dialogue points was wood moving to the forty-foot or thirty-five-foot setback along France to expand the interior connectivity and green space of the site. Is that, you know, that's a dialogue that our team has talked about internally? We chose to setback. We'd love to get a little dialogue and feedback on on just that concept and idea.
Yeah, I can speak to that quickly, and I'm sure the other commissioners would as well. I I I kind of echo previous comments, like I I try to keep it to fifty feet along France or somewhat close for US Bank. And even stepping that one fifty feet and moving the building inwards and eliminating a drive-through lane, some arcing spot, I think I'd be a fan of. Um, but surely on the interior, just getting rid of that boulevard and kind of narrowing that road there and expanding the sidewalks either way would be, I'd say like a minimal start to things, and if if for some reason you see extra space being required for that interior street, the north-south one specifically to really shine, I mean, I'd be willing to compromise a little on France, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Um, this is Joyanne. I would just, um, I think we need to keep that fifty-foot setback. That's really an integral part of the Southdale area plan. And I think if we want to increase um, green space within the site, I think Lou mentioned it uh, from Mick's memo, uh, maybe remove that boulevard and expand the sidewalks on other side and add green space to that. But I think that fifty-foot setback is very important, and we're trying to hold to that through all um, other developments along uh, France. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Agnew, would you like to? It's your opportunity.
Awesome. Love it. Thank you. Um, so thank you so much for for coming and presenting tonight. I wasn't around for the previous proposal that was provided. Um, but overall, I I really like this. Um, I want to echo Commissioner Miranda's comments on uh, about Mick Johnson's feedback. I I agree that that was really on point, and I I completely agree. I would love to see most, if not all, of his feedback incorporated. Um, some of the things that I really like about this plan, though, are, um, it doesn't scream parking. I I think that there's been a really nice effort put into integrating some of that parking, and and maybe there are some improvements that can be made. Uh, but overall, I think a lot of it is nicely um, tucked under, uh, which is really nice. I think that, you know, there are relatively few surface lots and and on-street parking. Just one thing to throw out there, and I know is, you know, we continue to pursue parking as an entire commission, and this is something that will be talked about, but um, planting the seed now, no response expected, but consider potentially charging for some of that on-street parking um, to really keep that desired uh, vacancy level and keep it inviting, so maybe you're targeting having one spot open at all, at all times and and um, charging for that parking can be a way to do that. Um, density, so density is often talked about in this, and and I feel kind of middle-of-the-road on that. I I don't have any strong concerns, like most of the other uh, commissioners, about the amount of density. Um, you know, we did have some residents write in and and they do have concerns with the amount of housing going into the area. Um, and I do think that it is, it's a fair question of, given the amount of of residential units going up in this area at this time, you know, there's a chance that there's going to be a higher vacancy rate. Um, so obviously something that you need to consider. Um, but I'm assuming that you thoroughly evaluated all of that, otherwise you wouldn't be proposing this. Um, if anything, you know, you could cut a few stories, but I I don't think that the density thing is what's going to necessarily make or break this. Um, a couple of the the cons or the things that stuck out to me is uh, the parking within the vunurfs. I really want to focus that those should be pedestrian-first, and so agree with, you know, removing that boulevard and really widening the sidewalks um, and potentially considering removing that parking and maybe just sticking to the drop-off um, sites that were located there. Um, most of the walkable space is on the inside. Um, I don't like the idea of reducing the the outer skirt sidewalks or um, setbacks to anything less than fifty feet either. Um, I think that there's opportunity to, again, like widen that sidewalk. I I don't need to rehash a lot of of what's been said, but I think um, Commissioner Burubey made a really good point about that. Um, the, there is a lot of parking in the US Bank, and I think that if you were to do the the north-south directly all the way through, um, I think I counted twenty-seven spots in that site, and I'm I'm curious like how often there would be twenty-seven customers in that, in the bank at one time, and I'm I'm sure maybe the intent is that some of that would be for employees, but uh, as a fellow employee at a company in Minnesota, um, I would prefer to have the underground parking if that's so near to the site. So potentially, you know, working with some of those sites to include underground parking for the employees so that you could reduce the parking uh, surface-level parking that's required there, that would also enable you to run that um, that vunerf all the way north-south. Um, and then lastly, I, you know, just really adding, please do the solar out of the gate. Um, I know that Commissioner Bennett mentioned solar, and I I read about solar in your proposal is is kind of being a potential next step. Um, I I would really encourage you to do it out of the gate. I think that that might be something, obviously, that comes comes up as you're reviewing the sustainability um, criteria as well, but I I would really um, like to see that in a final proposal or in the next proposal. Um, and I think that 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 is it for me, so thank you again. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners wish to share?
Commissioner Thorson, I think.
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Um, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Ridden, I have a few comments. And some are just curiosity and some are more direct on the project. On on the curiosity, and and uh, this is coming in some of our public comments, and I know this is going to come later, but it's not relevant to the Planning Commission decision-making. Uh, but I do want to ask it because we're getting feedback on it, and you will get feedback on it. And that is the pace of development in the city of Edina. I believe that the bower is now under construction. And you're proposing another three hundred-some units. What what do you think about the market uptake for this? Do you do you do? And do you think in regard to the bower, are you, are you competitive with, would this be competitive with that, or would it be synergistic with it, or I wonder if you could just comment on it, because this will come up later.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment and and concern and question. Uh, but but, you know, we would look to start construction on the multifamily tower in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-one after US Bank would be relocated into the new branch uh, and fully operational, at which time we could begin demolish in the existing uh, office building. demolish in the existing office building. And based upon, you know, construction time and the market forces, we would look to deliver this earliest is third quarter of 2023. So based upon our analysis of the market and the pipeline, that would be more than two years after delivery of the bower and any other potential competing site. So we recognize that competition makes us all better and it's not meant to detract from the bower. It's meant to play on, you know, what type of connectivity the area has, the promenade and everything else that makes this a high-quality site. So certainly where the market forces.
Well, thank you. Personally, I feel, you know, we can, we all see the concerns. I, I feel that there may also be opportunity for synergy here. The future is, in some areas, more dense and if you can get a area where there's more density, it might support more walkable retail, it might support more transit if, if they're closer together. So I actually see there could be some synergy. And I also think that sometimes people like to live in an area where other people live. Some people, you know, I was just reading about a, you know, an adventure runner. He likes to live about five hours away from anyone else, but a lot of people like to live near others. And so there may be some synergies with it also. But I think that issue obviously is going to be coming up regularly. Affordable housing, obviously there is an article in this, there, there was a correction brought earlier in tonight's meeting about the seven-story building and there was, you know, the Star Tribune article had the same misconception that the, the building itself was going to be affordable housing. What will the affordable housing be in the 23-story tower?
That's a good question. And frankly, Brett Webb and I have engaged with Stephanie Hawkinson twice to talk about different opportunities for affordability on the site. It's a very fluid situation with all kinds of different influences on the affordable housing market right now. And I, I can tell you, yes, Commissioner Nemirov, that we will absolutely 100% comply with the affordable housing policy.
Okay. Okay. Next, thank you. I want to talk about some items that I think other people have been covered on and a few things that other people haven't. Just as a comment, I, I agree with the, the need for consistent 50-foot green setback on France Avenue. I, I think that will be an important thing. I, I, I like the idea, what US Bank is trying to do with the community room and give that prominence. I'm hopeful there's another way to do that without, while also maintaining a 50-foot setback. A lot of conversation about green space tonight. The Southdale Plan itself wishes for 15% parkland, which is a little different phrasing than green space. At the ground level on this, and I know you have the amenity decks, which I want to talk about separately or next, but at the ground level, do you have an idea of the percentage of green space?
We do not. Neil may have calculated that, but I think it would come on a formal submission.
Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't formally calculated that amount yet. I don't know that it's, that it's complying at 15% presently. As calculated, it would, I think it would be anything within the property line. So we'll certainly provide that in our formal submission. Our intention is to, to work on some of the comments tonight and, and look at some adjustments to it. And then we can offer staff a, a calculation on that even before formal submission potentially.
Okay. And, and, you know, and obviously behind that question is, you know, the closer you can get to 15%, the better. And you're getting feedback on that from others also. Regarding the, my eyeballing it is if you include the amenity decks, you probably are at 15%. But you'll, you'll give math. Now, I kind of have a comment about the amenity decks, which is that I hope they are green. In other words, we see things like that and they, they're, they're more green in the sketch plan and in the approval plans than when they're built. When they're built, there, there often appears to be much more concrete than, than appear in the images that we're seeing here. So I won't make, you know, so just, you know, to minimize the concrete as much as possible, make it a, a green space that people can just kind of romp around and be more like a park. I like that you have already started the traffic study. Let's see, a couple other things. Shadows, you know, I, I could, six of one half dozen of another, the way you pivot the building, I suspect someone is going to be getting a shadow and we look forward to seeing the shadows study. One concern I have is winter shadow on, on the street itself. I'm concerned that if the, if, that when it's snowy and icy, that the shadow may, it may make the street more slippery than typical. And so when you come back, I'd like to hear kind of your thoughts about that, if you maintain the same orientation about what can be done, you know, are the setbacks adequate, but so we don't create a more dangerous street. And I suppose another thing to think about related to that is wind. I don't think there'll be much of a wind canyon because the Galleria is across the street, but to the extent you can address that, that would be appreciated if you maintain this orientation. A perhaps more far-out comment, but one thing you might want to consider, and you probably did, but is if there's any way to build a skyway to the Galleria. I think that would be a nice attractive feature. Maybe that can't be done. Maybe you, obviously you have to work with the Galleria, but that might be appealing to your residents and it, if there's a way to make that even a, some kind of public skyway, that would be very far sighted. One, I think one of the things we talked about a lot in the Southdale Plan was they have some sort of winter way to get across. It doesn't involve the road, but something to think about. I liked Commissioner Bennett's comment about a public feature. And so I think he has explained it very well. One side comment I have on that would be on the corner of 70th and France, if there's some kind of pedestrian art that could be built. And I'm, I'm sure you're, I'm sure you've already had internal discussions about that, but when you come back, I think that might be a nice place to put some kind of public art. Yeah, right there. I think that would be an attractive thing, both for the street and for your property. Sidewalks there, it's a good, you know, again, the, the 50-foot setback, I also agree with Commissioner Miranda's comment. I think that the closer you can bring that sidewalk to the building, I think it'll, it'll be more enjoyable for the pedestrians to be close to your building and between a double row of, you know, between the double row of trees and your building, much more than being close to France Avenue. And I think a lot of the pedestrians theoretically will be people hit your property. I think that they, that would enhance it also. And I believe Mr. Reardon, you know, you commented on that feedback earlier too. What else? Okay, a couple things. I'm reading, because of COVID, you know, that's obviously came out more recently than, we, we've been dealing with COVID more recently than any of the comprehensive plan documents that we created. One of the things I'm reading about is what people are at least now calling healthy buildings. I think it's an offshoot of sustainability. And I'm wondering if you've given, just kind of a question, I'm wondering what kind of thought you've given to healthy building design for these buildings?
That's a great question. And that's part of, you know, as we looked at the previous applicants that were larger combined parking that we didn't think was a great fit for a healthy building, especially maybe some of the security and safety concerns that myself and other property owners participated in, Mayor Hublin and Scott Neil and other city officials today. So there's been a lot of thought around that, Commissioner Nemirov. And one of our ideas for this potential office building, which again, this northwest corner, we, as we discussed with Director T, what to do through the office and through flexibility. But one of our ideas is to expand possibly upon the existing office presence, the medical presence, maybe look to bring a life science presence to this corridor. Again, the market's really choppy, it's very, so I can't say that with certainty, but I can tell you with 100% certainty, you know, what is a, what is a safe, what is a clean, what is a COVID-friendly, modern look like we could potentially end up on the southwest corner.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carlson. You were, I, I liked your answer, although I, I heard only probably about 80% of your words, you were going, you were breaking a little bit. If I could comment on that though, I think you were addressing wellness perhaps more than healthy building and, and wellness is very important. A healthy building is, is more dealing with the, the internal systems of the building to keep it healthy, keep air, the air within the building and the, the people living and working in the building healthy. It's something I'm just reading about. I suppose that people at ESG and Mortensen and Orion are, are probably just learning about it too. So you probably don't, you may not have detailed strategies, but because of COVID, I think it's going to be a, a growing trend. It'd probably be something that might even help the marketing of your building. So I guess I, I would encourage you to look at it because like if you say you want something coming on in 2023, building in 2021, I suspect people are going to be talking about healthy buildings more. Mr. Reardon, Mr. Carlson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I can, I can add to that a little bit. We're right in the forefront of this, you know, installing the HEPA filters and, and even more. So existing buildings, what we're seeing right now are retrofitting to respond to COVID in this way. But in general, I think your point is, is apt even pre-COVID. Their, their new buildings were pivoting to this, existing buildings were, were pivoting to creating much more of a healthy environment inside the buildings. So we already saw that, but obviously it's much more important now with COVID. We've, we've been, in our workspace team here, in our office, folks within ESG have, have really been on the forefront of studying this and then implementing it for a number of our clients. So that we have every intention on, on starting on the forefront of this building with the uses that Ted had just outlined and making them really state-of-the-art.
Yeah, you're, you're spot on, Commissioner Nemirov, where, you know, Mortensen has great experience with healthy buildings, air filtration, entrance, entrance, exit, address, touchless systems, all of those things are under consideration and a lot of America is really considering how do we use space now and how do we use space in the future in light of this recent pandemic. So you're touching on some of our different investment thesis points right now.
Well, that's excellent. When you come back, it would be great to have a, you know, a little more detail. I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend 10 minutes of your presentation or 10 pages of your presentation on it, but when you come back, it would be nice to hear a little bit about your plans in that area. I think it'd be a, a nice thing for the public to know what you're doing and, you know, I think you're feeling it from the market too. So thank you. I'm glad you're thinking about it. Let's see. Drive-through, the drive-through for the bank is kind of maybe might be analogous to the healthy building. There's, there's an increasing concern about drive-through. I like the way you're screening it and I like where you positioned it, but there's an increasing public concern about the environmental effects of drive-throughs, particularly, is I, oh, I shouldn't say particularly because I'm not an expert enough, but from what I see, there are, there are two issues in general about it that get raised. One, it's just the use of cars and, okay, that is part of our society today. The other is the environmental exhaust as cars sit there. And I, I know in past representatives of the bank have been with us and there aren't any tonight. But when you come back, it would be nice to hear what you could do to address the environmental issues of cars going through the drive-through. If there's, you know, if there's strategies, you know, like there are some people now, for example, that personally try to, you know, a lot of people will just park and wait when they, like when they pick their kid up and they'll just leave the car running. And, you know, other people now are turning their cars off when they idle, instead of idling. So if there's things that you were the bank feel comfortable saying that you could do to address the, the emission issue that comes from drive-throughs, that would be appreciated.
Commissioner, thanks for that comment. Yeah, we don't, on the, on the line, we just have myself, but we'll take that back to our, our partners on that team and bring them that comment and discuss internally. And we can follow up with a, a more complete answer or response to that at a later date.
Thank you. Well, with those comments though, I do want to end with that I like this proposal very much. And I think, I think I'm hearing similar general feedback. So I, I think, I think this proposal as seen, if it, if it is built, I think it'll be a nice addition to the Southdale District. And thank you very much for bringing it forward and thank you very much for the nice discussion tonight. Do any other commissioners have any comments? Well, there we are. Mr. Carlson, Mr. Reardon, did you have anything final that you'd like to discuss?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I wanted to say something, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lou, Lou Miranda, I believe that is.
I must have scrolled off your screen or something. Yeah. Basically, I wanted to talk about the drive-through myself because I somehow managed to skip it in my first comments. So that whole bank corner, the southwest corner feels completely far into the rest of the development. And it, so as Chair Nemirov said, you know, it's, it's going to drive more exhaust in the area and environmentally it's bad. But I think one thing that is often lost in these discussions is also the fact that this is something I, a talking point I mentioned quite often at these meetings is that when you build car infrastructure, you get more cars. So if, if that were a park or an empty lot or just disused completely, it would be better for this project, it would be better for the internal streets than having a bank there or having this version of a bank. I mean, I'm fine with banks, but because what it's doing, not only are you having cars sitting there and idling, it's driving more vehicles into this development and through this development. And so no matter how nice your streets are, no matter how pedestrian-friendly they are, it's going to drive more and more cars. If you have, I mean, it looks like there's four or five bays for drive-throughs. That's a lot of cars going through here, you know, that I, I just think it's going to drive. And these are people who, because they're going to a drive-through, the expectation is that it's going to be quick. And so they want to go quickly through these streets. They want to quickly get to the bank. They want to quickly get back onto France Avenue or 70th Street. It's going to drive the worst kind of motorists to this area. And I think that in itself is just, is just horrible for this thing. It feels like the southwest corner is, I mean, the time machine just moved it from 1980 into this project. I mean, the rest of the project is miles ahead of, of where that is. And I just think there's got to be some way of, of making that less car-focused. And as, as another commissioner mentioned, you know, the, the huge amount of surface parking, you know, the, the heat island effect, I mean, just everything about that is, is terrible. So anything that can be done to, to rectify that would be great. And I mean, as I'm sure we've all seen on, on the news, you know, that in San Francisco, the skies are orange. I mean, California is burning. Minnesota yesterday, and I believe today will set a record for lowest high temperature for these days ever recorded. Climate change is, is real and we are just seeing the beginning of it. And I think even if we could do something like create a separate driveway or somehow, you know, create, split the driveway that, that hits France and make it so that some of the cars are dedicated just to the bank because I just don't want those cars on the rest of this, on the rest of these internal streets. My, and then my final comment would be, I, I think a skyway to, or either internally or across the street would be a mistake. This is a problem that Minneapolis, downtown Minneapolis is dealing with, where basically what you're doing is you're creating competition for the street-level merchants. So now you've got people on the second floor, you know, where the skyway is, you know, you're, you're competing. So you're, you're driving half the traffic on each of those areas. So I think a better pedestrian experience and a better pedestrian connection across the street would be better. And, and, you know, good winter maintenance would be much better than having a, a skyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Do any other commissioners have anything further?
This is Jimmy. I do.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, no, I just had a couple.
Yeah, no, I just had a couple of comments that were, I guess, produced from some other commissioners' comments, uh, starting with Commissioner Agnew and kind of relating to that southwest side. As, as I kind of alluded to it, I mean, the site looks and feels like a placeholder for some dramatic change to come. So I, I'm kind of treating it that way. However, I do respect the fact that once you build something, the potential for it to change a lot less. So if there's something we specifically rectify here, I think it would go along with what Commissioner Agnew and others mentioned is there's some way to free up parking for employees elsewhere. How we can eliminate the, all the parking spots that interrupt that north, south spine of streets. And even if it weren't a street, but were just kind of open green space or a park, that could easily be converted into a street in the future, but would also serve for what looks like a much needed kind of outdoor gathering space. Uh, so that's just one suggestion there. It seems like you could rearrange and still maintain a drive-through, which I think we're all not huge fans of, but at least it could, uh, drive more of a pedestrian, uh, anchor to that site. So then, um, the competition with the car is much more apparent. And, uh, the car is seen as a guest versus the, uh, the driver, unintended. So then, uh, secondly, just, I guess, again, regarding France, and I respect everyone for sticking to the fifty-foot setback. I just feel like this specific development is different where so much of the value for a pedestrian or bicyclist is interior to the site, um, for a lot of natural reasons. I mean, France will have thousands of cars passing right by you. No matter what you do out there, it's going to be loud, you're going to be closer to traffic. It's dangerous. It's inherently more dangerous. So I'd, I'd urge to keep whatever setback you do, whatever you think's going to work. But, you know, at least have the landscaping there, simple, sweet, and invest more heavily on the interior network where people will actually gather and commingle. Um, that's, that's just what's going to happen. Um, to that point, having thousands of cars passing through on France, the hundred or so a day that are idling in the, the bank, drive-through really are just peanuts compared to what's happening all around. So unfortunately, we're kind of just surrounded by cars. That doesn't mean we should do something, shouldn't do something about it. But I think the, the problem is just the vehicle itself and what this area is built around. So then the last comment I have is about the orientation of the northeast tower. And I, I just want to throw in extra support for how it's oriented now. Uh, for the residents in the Cornelia neighborhood, it's less intrusive because it's more narrow. Um, and again, uh, for the regional and local people that are using France and York and in north and south, with it being oriented more east-west, you'll see this building more prominently. And that's what I would hope, uh, to see. Again, uh, having some signature sustainable element to it, uh, being kind of the beacon for the site. I'd rather that be seen with the people, um, using this area versus, uh, neighbors trying to enjoy their own space. And that's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Bennett. Any other commissioners, anything further? Mr. Carlson, Mr. Reardon, do you have anything further?
I, you know, we just, you know, we appreciate the dialogue, appreciate the engagement. And really, we're excited about the possibilities here. So, you know, we'll, uh, review with the council next week and then, uh, you know, hopefully make some revisions and come back with some better ideas is, is how we continuously improve our concepts here and, and, uh, talk more about the design, more about the streetscape, more about the engagement at the pedestrian level. And, um, you know, we're looking forward to this project. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing your next version. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, everyone, that takes us to the next item on our planning commission work, uh, our agenda, which is the 2021 work plan. It's that time of the year. It's September, so you start thinking about what you're going to do next April. And that's good planning, actually. Um, I'm sure some of you in your businesses, if your calendar year started doing your planning a couple of months ago, perhaps for, for, for next year. So, uh, Kerry sent out a draft work plan, which you've received. And this is not intended to be the final work plan. This is not, we expect this to be a discussion. We'll have this, we'll, we'll, we'll cover this somewhat. What Kerry, will we cover this in our next work session? Or when, what, what's the, Kerry, why don't you tell us what the calendar is for this maybe? What, what the, what we should be doing here?
Sure. Yeah, we can have a little bit of discussion this evening if you would like. Um, basically what's included in the, at least the staff proposal is, you know, land use applications are, are bi-weekly or bi-monthly meetings. That's the bulk of our work. Um, so just acknowledge that. And then the, a carryover from last year is that the Edina Business Center District, you know, the, the Cahill Industrial Park, that whole area, um, assuming that it gets funded in the budget for next year. That would be, that's a huge project. It's essentially a mini comprehensive plan for that area. So that's going to be a, a huge investment in time. Um, so that would be the second item. And then as we have been, you know, it's kind of the zoning ordinance work that we're always working on. And we've provided a, a initial list there for discussion. But the, uh, so the timing here, we would talk about this at our work session on September twenty-third with the intent of really finalizing it and then having it on your regular agenda on September thirt, twenty-third, that same night. And then Ian would present the work plan to the city council on October sixth. So that, that's the timing.
Okay. So what we have here is just kind of carryover from this year, as you see. And this is making some assumptions about certain initiatives that we're going to complete this year and certain that'll slide to next year. So I guess the question for everyone on the call, there's a few questions. First of all, assuming that's the right allocation, the right division of items that'll come, get completed and will slide, do you want to include all these things in our work plan for next year? That's the first question. The second question is, are there things that you'd like to add to the work plan? Uh, we have a project tracker with some, which, which has captured some parking lot items that we've talked about. And you may have other thoughts also. So I, I guess maybe we could have a little conversation tonight if there are things you'd like to see added. Um, well, you know, and if there are things you'd like to see taken off of here right now, let us know. Does anyone have feedback?
So will you clarify the parking? So I know, I know it's already underway, you know, specifically Forty-Fourth and France. But are, aren't we still discussing parking more broadly? And whether, um, you know, the requirements for some of these projects should have fewer parking spaces? I think that was part of our work plan, right? And I, and I, unless I'm, I don't see that here, and so maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's on our 2020 work plan. So ideally we will be finished by the end of the year, but if we're not, it'll, it'll carry over. So yeah, that, 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 um, that will continue for us.
Is it, is it a given then anything that we don't wrap up ends up? It doesn't just disappear? We keep working on it?
Right. Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you for clarifying.
Re- regarding parking, one thing we'll talk about our next work session is perhaps setting a targeted date for completion of our current project. We can always add another phase of work, but, uh, it, there might be value in our setting. Hey, let's complete this by November or December and then talking about that. Are there other matters that we think we'd like to add? I don't know if anyone has the project tracker available. Some of the items on it are paid-on-street parking, car idling, truck noise during construction, uh, land use proportion of street space used by cars, transportation, bike transit, pedestrian plan for Greater Southdale, uh, Lincoln Drive, North and South Node, tree ordinance, bike lanes, and then, uh, as you heard me mention tonight, I'm kind of interested in whether we should do something about healthy buildings. Um, but this is a discussion, so I'm just wondering what other people think. Are we good for now and want to review this further in two weeks? Or does anyone have thoughts for tonight? Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, uh, I suppose most of those other things were, were my suggestions. Um, the, I guess the biggest one would be, and I think we talked about this last time or recently, was some sort of transportation plan for Greater Southdale. I, I think, um, you know, we did, well, we, uh, one was done for, uh, Grandview. Um, and I think that's the only other one that actually had its own transportation plan. Um, I think Southdale is so enormous and, you know, some of the issues we're, we're seeing and talking about at this, at this sketch plan today, you know, relate to, uh, transportation and whether, you know, the planning commission works with the transportation commission to have some sort of, you know, joint thing on Southdale or if we defer it to the transportation commission. But I think something, I think a discussion needs to be had about, you know, where we should go with that. And then the other one would be the Lincoln Drive, North and South Node. What that was about was, um, you know, we have our, in the last comprehensive plan, we had our, uh, our neighborhood nodes, you know, Forty-Fourth and France, Fiftieth, France, that sort of thing. Um, it seems like if one is developing on the west side of France, or certainly the northwest side, or of Edina, um, you know, Lincoln Drive comes down from the north and it goes up from the south, but they don't connect. And actually, my understanding is that the city and/or the, um, three of those parks is going to be connecting, uh, the Nine Mile Creek Trail underneath Ave 169. So there's a possibility, I think, for somehow connecting those nodes. So I don't know, I mean, it looks like we're chewing off a lot with the, um, uh, the industrial area. So maybe this gets postponed for a year, but I think it's something we should eventually look at. So I guess the, the biggest thing for me would be, I think we need to somehow think about transportation in Southdale.
Thank you, Lou. One, one thing I would suggest, I mean, those are, those are, now we have three potential initiatives. Perhaps in our next meeting, we rack and stack the, um, uh, the, 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 the industrial area, the Southdale Transit and this Lincoln node, Lincoln Drive node. Maybe we rack and stack and see which one we, is our priority. Um, that might be a, a worthwhile thing to discuss.
I believe the, uh, industrial park or business area is in the comp plan. That we have to do something with it?
Kerry, I mean, is it, it's in the comp plan. Is it a have to do something?
It's, it's not a have to do, but I think our city council has really pretty much said it is a have to do. And I, it sounds like there will be budgeting for us. So, um, yeah, I think that's, uh, that should be the top of our list.
Okay.
And one thing I might recommend, and I think it would be an easy one to put on the work plan, would be a some kind of a joint meeting with the transportation commission to talk about a future study. You know, and maybe we can, you know, I think that's an easy one that we could get the council to agree to on our work plan to at least get that discussion going. And maybe there's a recommendation that comes out of that. I throw that out for an idea.
I think it's fine. I don't know if that's necessarily a work plan item and we can do that. The benefit of putting on a work plan, of course, is then you do it. Um, okay, that's a good idea. Let's talk about that on the twenty-third too. That's a great idea. Joanne, you had something.
We can't hear you.
Your headphones are being muted. Do you have subtitles?
No.
Let me try and unplug and replug your headphone. Try and plug it back in.
Well.
We hear you now.
We hear you.
Oh, you do? Oh, a good thing I didn't start swearing. Okay. So Kerry, we met with the transportation commission last year, I think it was. And they were working on something that they were going to present to us again. And I completely forgot, what was that? Do you remember there was, they're working on a document? And I thought it had to do with transportation and planning. Do you remember?
There were two items, as I remember. One was a process to, so they allow them to give us feedback into projects. And the second was they were, they were, they were learning and studying how transportation reviews are done for projects and trying to come up with a more formal uh, listing of what the contents of they want, what they want consultants to review when they do a transportation review of various projects.
Bingo. That was it. Anyway, so I, that just ties into what you were just suggesting to have another meeting, you know, with them. I think that's good to kind of, because those are all good things to, um, that was going to help both of us, both groups. I'll go mute.
Others, other others, anyone? Well, we can talk about this again on the twenty-third. Or, and I'll ask this to Kerry, if people have thoughts about what they'd like to add or take off, can they send that by email before the twenty-third? This isn't, this isn't the kind of thing where you need a quorum, where you need to watch out for a quorum, is it?
Nope. I think that's a good idea. If suddenly a great idea strikes you, shoot me an email, um, you know, so you don't forget.
Okay. Thanks. Are we good then on the work plan?
Yep. I think that's good for tonight.
Okay. Uh, correspondence and petitions, Kerry, is there anything?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Chair and member comments, anybody? Okay, uh, staff comments?
I don't have anything either. We didn't have anything on the last council agenda, so I didn't even attend.
Wow. Okay. Well, that takes us to adjournment. Um, our, our student member had to leave to, for homework. Uh, but Ms. Olson, could you do a roll to be officially record our adjournment?
Well, there's no motion, but I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, if you can hear me.
Yes. Very well. Ms. Olson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Barubi?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Agnew?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair Nemirov?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Have a good night.